Hello. Hello everyone, welcome to today's live stream. So we will continue quickly now without further ado. Uh my throat is not super well yet, so I will speak very less and we will just continue with the things, maybe you will share the video also. Uh you are welcome to post comments in the chat as always. Uh last week was slow as I was not well, so don't want this to delay away furthermore. I want to continue with the things, with there were few ideas I wanted to continue which are not that complicated and I was wanted to attempt those, so I will continue with that. So if I share my screen, let me change uh this. Uh this seems good but my one don't, so if I uh copy and just quickly paste it here, just give me a second. And I'll just put it down there. And it have automatic there were like automatic crops were there. So just quickly to this and yeah, place it here. Wonderful, I have done that off. Okay, so we have our uh scene ready. So basically what I wanted to show you, uh as we know already, we were you know struggling a bit with the scene and as well as uh the floor. I'm not happy with the amount of details we have. So what I did, uh I look for more things, so I will show you. Basically what I did, uh if I open up my, so I search forest path. Okay, so the because I wanted to see how many details and every other things are there. Okay, so the very first one which I liked was this one, it was Bo Queen, I think full name is Bo. The boy is here and this, there is no other things are here, so you can just you can just play this video and this is pretty much it. We cannot really that high resolution but you see the amount of details are there, yeah. Then I found out some scans by people, uh like this one, this one and this is I think Substance Designer maybe? Yeah Substance Designer, right? So what I wanted to showcase with this was uh basically if you look closely, there are like decaying leaves, twigs, some dry leaves, some pebbles, some twigs blending with the dirt, some falling on top, uh some leaves on top, like there are multiple layers of leaves and twigs and other type of debris, like if we if we go here, this is like maybe around the pines. So this is the the skin of the bark, uh basically scales of the bark. Uh these are the the twigs and the branches and these are the the smaller ones where the pine cone and the pine needles are. So the tiny twigs, uh then there are like needles all over, uh everywhere, uh in the different directions. This one is stretching, I think more displacement, uh but there are large and thin branches and there must be I believe I can put cones, yeah, there are cones. So basically there is like so much detail which goes in, it could be in the texture itself, the base one, so like if I remove the twigs from it, the large level, if I just look at pine level surfaces, so I can take these tiny scales, these cones, these tiny twigs maybe, some of these, this all could be in the texture, but this large level or these twigs could be scattered on top or even these scales can be scattered on top. And then lastly we have uh Byadenshafi, he is wonderful, I think I worked with him in the past. And we have same thing, you will see here also, then now there are like moss also covering on top of other stuff. So now you will see uh there will be some twigs which are fallen fresh, are not covered by moss, but there are old stumps which are covered by moss, so stuff like that happens, uh definitely he might have seen the references. But you know, uh what I was thinking, either we add it in the ref, in the in the textures we have, we introduce twigs and uh leaves and branches and everything else, or we just add them as a debris into our thing. So, so basically our, all the surfaces basically, uh because we have our leaf texture here, so we can convert it to dry or semi-dry or you know dead leaves and then we can scatter it across. So dead leaves could blend with this and some not, so at least that will you know add relatability, you know you have some grass or hay twigs which could be grass, but uh we need other ones, more, more details in there. So again, this is like we adding on ourselves, so then I was looking at this old scene by Mavi, okay, so I'll show you. Uh I will close it afterwards. So let me bring it here, so here, okay. So this is uh from Mavi, it's the forest path, so I think I have uh wait just give me uh just a second. Uh if I um show and use default, there was nervous I think there was something I turned off uh in there. Advance, foliage is on, yeah, there is everything on, there is something is off in there, but what I wanted to show you, like if I turn off all these, uh if I go to show, advance, if I turn off first foliage and then grass, you see? So these are the textures basically, uh they have. Okay, and these uh textures are driving basically more than that, but you will see they have either they have blended these or they have inside the textures, they have some cones, some twigs, some textures. It's a weird overlay, maybe they have multiple textures which they are blending in this way. But you see there are needles, there are cones and other stuff is there on top of it to define the detail. It could be same for the dirt, I think, so this is still the same and if you go this rocky, you see there are the pebbles, some residue and other stuff. And if you look at the green one, you see there are like these uh clovers and uh moss and underneath usually you get some structural look in there. So for now, uh turn on the grass again, right? So if I go close, see, so they have this mesh on top, then the clovers on top, then local twigs on top and then grass, plants, you see like the, it is detailed because there are a lot of details. Okay, so it's, you can't escape it, like so it's a really clever, uh which I have seen it, you can do a lot of uh less in small amount of assets also, which is clever and mostly you know suggested also. But like if you're gonna go into this type of care, you know chaos or uh detail, it's definitely needed. This looks flat to from a distance, is there something wrong with this? It's like like it's wrongly mapped or something. Looks flat and there should be more detail, like this pine cones have detail, like these look flat mostly. Although this have really, you know, crisp veins details, maybe they decided to, it's weird. See this have details, but it's okay. So that's what I meant to say, hello, so then you know basically small, medium, you know large, in the small space, in the medium space you will have the same thing like small, medium and large and then in the large space also, you know, you have simple different things. So yeah, so that's how I was looking at it for as a inspiration. Uh so yeah, let's uh get back to the chat, okay. Uh hello Leah, hello Vikram, hello Vishwa, so yeah, hello, so first of all happy Diwali everyone and just like uh you have a family, go back and celebrate your family, the stream does not matter to you. And uh it's still noon here, so we will celebrate small one in the evening and you can still feel I'm still not fully onto that energy, so I will talk very less, okay? So I still decided I wanted to do it without video or without audio, uh but I still came up and I thought we will see, but I'm feeling it. I'll start coughing after a while if I speak too much, okay? So yeah, happy Diwali everyone and just let's just continue, I just give you update what I wanted to do in there, uh let me share um yeah again, so here uh what you can uh uh what I was mainly doing. Uh I was watching a bunch of lighting tutorial, so I didn't find anything interesting, but the only thing is like I might have bunch of settings turned off. I want to, you know, maybe try relighting the whole scene, deleting all the lighting and try to do it again. And uh try a bunch of stuff. Uh in the second I wanted to, you know, add a debris to it, introduce debris, leaves, twigs and other stuff. Uh there was another small thing I wanted to add, this is like, these are like small thing without no brainer stuff basically. Hmm I forgot, but yeah, if I remember I will, I will, okay? So yeah, let's continue with the stuff. Okay, so it's the composition line, so there's the lighting, all the lights are here. So if I turn, this is the skylight. The impact lighting also, automatic clouds. There's too many stuff. There is for everything linked to this. Yep, so this is, so what I usually used to, you know that's super weird. So what I used to do, you you know, use a skylight which we already have, but we can use HDRI also. And uh we can first need to decide what lighting setup we need to have. Uh I was, we can either go with out, uh overcast or early morning even uh, so I will just quickly look into HDRI heaven, okay? So we can search overcast, we have overcast. This one is, even any any of these will work, but with the a lot of things around might not work. So let's try this one and uh sunrise. This seems good, when you have this. So pure sky, it's basically there is no cloud, but there are clouds here. This one is good too, but there are wires in here I can see, this is also this is also good because the hori- horizon is pretty much flat, but I want to see the sun to create, because I want to create lighting like this. Sun have risen, uh sun has risen, but uh is uh something like this. This one is good too, let's see. But there is like these assets might be visible in there, but we are not turning our camera, then I will see this one. If you see it's gonna cast shadows also, we're gonna make, so let's uh, I think I downloaded before. We need EXR, so uh if we have go to edit, plugins on, I think there was something mesh. There was mesh distance field or something, there was people doing, but it's okay, HDRI backdrop, I can, so we have to turn on this and if we come to edit, uh project setting. Uh let's search mesh distance. Yeah, so it's like generate mesh distance, it's like for ray tracing guys, so, so turn this on and um there was like I I seen people in the lighting something, yeah, I watched a bunch of tutorials in the past, so I don't know, uh is lighting and rendering. Is it the rendering, a mobile, it must uh they did a bunch of settings turned on here which I don't remember anymore. Turn that on, we turn that on, aluminum is there, yeah, the hardware ray tracing when available, yes. What did, did you see something? Okay, and megalights are there, which we didn't ray tracing shadows, let's see. Okay. Hardware ray tracing is on, ooh look at that, what happened? Something happened, the water became milky. Yeah, lighting is there. There is something that someone did uh for leaves also something like that, which was crazy, so software created proxies or we don't know, half of the stuff. High quality reflection, so this is, let's try. We don't know what to turn on from here, so let's just keep it. Reflections, skins, the luminance, ooh look at that. This? Yes, hmm, the better reflections maybe, yeah. So this is good and then plugin, let's see, do we have something related to Lumen? I think, so lighting, hmm do we have an, we don't have anything, so we just restart it, okay, I will get back in there, meanwhile we can check chat, uh yes, save, we, did we change anything? Save nothing, don't save. Okay, so we are uh uh I would click download on the HDRIs. And there is one I wanted also, what is called Aurora, Aurora? What is spelling of Aurora? We do have Aurora, HDRI, the screws, it's cool. Just give me a second, I'm looking at night one, uh look at chat. And just a second. There are good light was, it is a milky way. It's okay, there is a okay. Kuna, today we have Mithai and all cuts. Good, yeah, yeah, I made myself kajkutli. That's one. Gotham, hello, hello Gotham, thank you very much for joining in, I just wanted to say hi, that's great. Thank you very much, uh you said, which film name, Gotham B? Uh I I forgot the name, uh this we recently, we had it on our station also, right? It's the same Gotham, right? Hey please tell me full name, Gotham B, then I know it's you. Uh yep, so we are going through bunch of stuff, yep. Glad to have you here man, thank you very much for stopping by. And here, like if you, in the we are trying to do stuff basically. So now we're gonna screen more usually with the things, because now we have mesh distance field, it's calculating those in there. Ooh, this actually got little bit better, I believe, okay? So we are back with our Milky River. Which I'm not sure why it happened, maybe it did not like the settings we changed, it's okay, but look this, should look better. At least, okay, so what we gonna do? Hmm I will first turn off all the so we only have this directional light. Uh I think we can add uh HDRI backdrop, which is awesome. And you know what it does, it give you this. Yeah, it give you something like this and then you can, you know, move it across. Uh if you want to have uh render the car or some assets in there, you can do it. It definitely works in there, so like if I show you, so there are bunch of settings, so you can change, you know, the lighting and the size and everything else, uh yeah, all the good stuff it have. But we want it to be big. So we can use it as lighting, so how big is it? One five zero, zero zero zero, one five zero. Yeah, big enough, let's keep it one. For the, you know, the projection vector you can change if you are placing something in there, but for us it doesn't matter, we are going to be under the look thing, so we can select move to lighting and also we can make the lighting folder, current folder. Or we can make a lighting two. So maybe create a new folder. We have this and we make this. So everything will go inside here, so we have our HDRI here, so if I turn on my directional light, we will get something still. Okay, and actually this one is better than number four, but our landscape is black. Hmm. Maybe that does not like HDRIs maybe. Is it because of maybe it's because of uh neonite? We'll check. So we have uh skylight, okay, uh this one, actually we go in there, we need uh you know HDRI. And if you s- if I open this up, this is like default one and this one is uh should be which format is it? There is no format, so it's, there are like bunch of other one also, either from the same. Misty pine is from them also, actually haven't, so I think it's the same. So I downloaded EXR from them, okay, so I will upload it in uh not here, content browser, don't mind me stumbling today, because here this one, let's open uh window, content browser. Hmm, so in our landscape is there, environment is there. And let's make a new folder lighting. HDR, let me put in oh, it is importing. And only the full resolution sixteen K, so it can oh, it is not taking, so it is, do we have to turn on some setting, I think? So I have HDR I al- HDR also. We have to change it to something. Texture group to so skybox. No bitmap, HDR here. No bitmap world. Still not. What else did you change? World and HDR. Nope. So let me try the, so if it not taking that, so I will take okay, HDR it is not importing. So this is fine. This will have different icon, this is texture type. Not sure. Do we need to convert to some other format? And if I look at this it's texture cube. Yeah, so it's texture cube, but ours is not. This is true texture. How to change the set, asset type of uh texture cube? Is it texture cube or is this? Nope. Let's see, we can just delete this first. I will import it again. They didn't ask me last time if I wanted to do something with it. It said importing. The asset action reload, load. Select replace reference. Anyone know how to convert this, then let me know, because this is hmm should not wait, okay, search Google it. It's in should say okay, so they it goes either saying the sign or either saying uh convert the EXR to HDR, because the HDR we have is not importing. So they have a GIMP, they think doing with the GIMP, but I have, I have GIMP, nice. So import EXR there and uh export HDR maybe from there. Let me try file, export as no, it's not importing the HDR. Hmm, yeah, something is, maybe we need to convert it somehow. Even if I d- I have HDR downloaded also, but it's saying import failed. Do we have to import it some other way? It's not taking HDRs. Let's search that, if if it's not importing. Uh maybe it's too big, so give me a second, let me download a small one. I download the full sixteen K, so they say I could have limit, so I will download eight K. Yep. So sixteen K apparently don't take. Start crying at sixteen K. So we have sorted eight K textures, not sixteen K HDRIs. I believe. So now we can drag and drop and see. Okay. There is the sun. Can bring it here and see. Okay. And we have directional light which is where, here. I will try this out. Do we can we link somehow our light to it? There's a nice way to m- match both of it. With what I was trying, I was like maybe it will, you know, yeah, why it is not lighting it well? Uh s- this colour we don't want. Volume to clouds are fine, but wait it is everything looks in shambles. Maybe it does not like the HDR backdrop. Sky atmosphere. Okay, so I think it automatically create that or sky atmosphere, sorry. Without directional light, okay. Yeah. So it's uh that automatic thing. Look at the bright. Reflection in water. Water. I don't think the HDR gonna, it's gonna let us do the HDR. It just took a black. Who there? He's just studying mesh. What is this? Amaratsu on this. What is wrong with this? Is it A O? Doesn't seem like it. I don't know, but there's wrong with this. So, okay, for now, let's just go with it. Just change the things. Get try out. Because we have turned on bunch of stuff for the hmm rate distance, mesh distance field and other stuff. So might work. This we have change. Is it change? Eh just keep it, ooh. Definitely got more layers, basically we have, we have this depth now. But what if you see in the camera, it would go away. Where is our but it's too yellow now. Atmosphere is fine, but it's too yellow now. Where is sky, sky? Hmm, we'll play with this later on, to till the things, so we and we can fix the yellowness using post-process also if you want. We'll just bring it up for now. Okay, uh do we have anything in the chat? Give me a second. Sorry, I missed the start, are you using the PCG? Yes, we have used PCG, we started uh we made uh this river path, river and uh the forest path using PCG. And the wall, I'll show you. Nothing much, uh so this 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 forest path is PCG, this river is PCG and this wall is PCG, that's only thing. There is there is other small tiny one, there is this uh debris scatter we may test it out. Go on, select it. So I just scatter some rocks. Where did it go? Oh, we went out of the bounds basically, I think. Yeah, it scatter rocks based on the spline. That we can make it bigger, make bigger chunk, I think. I think we can, when we can scale is, can we scale the points? Is it linked to it? Nope. We can, I think, with the points, so we can say, okay, we can make it larger or smaller in the corner. That'll be cool. Yeah, this is what we made. Nothing fancy and we still, what happened here? Looks ugly. Stop matching again, all three. It's fine here. Uh we like half of our life, just go into debugging this stuff. Turn on one feature and it just stop matching. Specular seems to be crazy, different. Roughness have slight uh thing, but I think it's not uh on the road, road path seems fine, it's just the pebble. What else? Specular is the main component. So these patches is okay. We know. We know we did some stuff in there. Okay, so uh what I'm gonna do was uh scattering some pebbles, and we were going to fix the textures of all our foliage also. So we gonna, we gonna do that as well, okay? Hmm, for the debris, we, uh I will just quickly look on Sketchfab if I find something, so which will be nice. Sketchfab and hmm. And we made downloadable. Let's look. Debris, debris, gonna count this. Oh, phones also in here, but this is paid, not free one. Paid. This is downloadable. There is also one thing I found, there are stumps and uh logs, they are the realism. Hmm, there is, there is, there is, there is. Loplistics, so help. There is tweaks, but if you don't need it. That's it. That was a small catalogue. Hmm, so let's uh remove this. Downloadable. Downloadable. Uh just look at a few more and then just maybe create our own, because we already have it in Substance Designer. So we can make it using Substance Designer or in Blender. We can scatter it there. Using geometry nodes. Or we can just simply take it and scatter it inside here. We can make a layer for each. Might take some time, so this is good. But where is the download button? Thought it was downloadable. Lopoly. Downloadable. Oh you need to download GLP. Texture is at two fifty six. Ah ugly, but it's okay. And they have this uh, you know, they have low poly stones and rocks back also, which we can use for river bed as well. This stones. Okay. Fur texture GLP. Don't really let us not complicate things. Other these were uh the bigger ones, so better. But this this is good. Is it a blended menu or just all texture only? But you see the amount of chaosness is there. Scan. Nice. Like it. Again nice, but we don't want it. Nope. Okay, no. We have some good stuff here. This will work basically even we place these. It will add a lot of details. See there are sticks. Let's see how the Yeah, hopefully, but it's fine. I believe this will be fine. Yep, there's the leaves, the dry one also, so this one is good. This uh good friend, what's his name? It's like I will move this here. So friend is mentioned Isaac Ryan, so let's go with these. Uh he is crazy also. That's crazy amount of scans in his profile. It's a good reference for we don't have roots also. Yeah, this is a cool reference. For the 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 amount of surface detail basically if we need to gather. Leaves and other stuff. They're like yellow leaves, dry leaves. Okay. Cool. So this is good. So we got the stuff. Uh let me fire up our blender. So we can either incorporate the things into our hmm you know textures or we can uh make our own thing. So we know where our textures are. We have imported it from here. Let me turn off. Uh where is it? Here, landscape textures. If I just quickly show you after importing our So here's the whole. That's why I like it, so if I go to material review. You could see all of them in one. So it's basically not zip or anything. Like stupid uh when you download the zip, you have to extract those stuff. It's just like one single form, I just drag and drop. No need to unzip or anything. I think the base is this, the alpha base, alpha is the way it's made from, high and lower here. And which is good. So I think we all need the The leaves are there, we can you know separate them out and use them as debris. Get it. There's like a lot of stupid stuff is there. So I'll select all of them. Alt P. Keep pause. Yep, this these nodes and everything is really hate. So I believe filter out the empties. Now we have this with thing we started currently hierarchy. So we don't have that. Now we simply just the bottom one, because this is the high it says. High. And this is high, so It's a nice arrangement. Base for the grass. Again, the base can be used for creating debris, but we can use this also. Cool. I'll just Quite slow, I don't know. It shouldn't be slow that much. We have We'll have a little bit height. This is like flat, which is hmm not good, but it have okay, from top it is. So everything have a bulge, which is good, so can be added. This is super low poly, but it's okay. Grass we don't need anyway. This we have also. Only the debris I was thinking about. We can make it, you know, cut and add uh more polygons and make it better. Sharing ideas. Then we have single but have some geometry, which is good. We'll add. This will add details in the bottom. On the path at least, I will use some of these. And we have other twigs also, so we can bring those. There's still a lot of these. We can just start deleting them. Still a lot of them. Let me bring the other one sticks. These are the sticks. Hmm we have Okay. What is there? Do we need it? I don't think so. So delete her. Just one? That's stupid. And sticks only. So what we can do, I can show you quickly now. And you can take uh maybe we can take uh where is soil here? Mesh plane, two meter, nice shading. New Alright, so No, uh this is the cover soil texture on two meter. So we have some tweaks, so what we can we can improve it if we want to. Uh but can definitely we gonna take it directly in there, we're gonna incorporate it, but I'm just showing you. I think we have a new uh transform animator is not This tree. Is it this? Not. I have downloaded five. It should be here. Let me check. They went to to new one, new So this is not randomize transform. It's I think it's for the I understand. So points, faces, so we have this. And why there are not So you can have collection also, like for example we have this. Select all of them and we say okay, new collection. Let's select sticks. Now we have sticks, all of them, realise, not realise. Pick instance, random and then we can randomize it. For now this one don't have, we can randomize. And then Let's keep it and then we try Yep. And so we get this, I think we can mask simply from here. So how this could uh help us? Right. The only the only issues are the corner ones, which can I think it it we can create another mask and then we can I think, you know, I think here is the attribute for doing it, but let's not do it. The only thing is the corner ones. We can create another one. You know, delete the inner ones. What I can do, I can duplicate this one also. And because select right, so the right so then it stays inside do we have here to keep the you know the sticks are here right so we can put them in and we can blend them with this texture also uh with shadings but mainly what I mean to do is you can simply go to your render settings right and you can make it two zero four eight and you can simply if I make it you know match the corners match the corner of the screen here for now this is how it works like I need to find the exact how we can do it like a v uh render uh viewport preview what it does let me show you it's on the other screen here so you got basically render and this we can hide because we are in this so you go to layout and first let's match the direction now you can go yeah I mean you match it uh perfectly with the corner I think there is a way to if we see do we have something which can tell us view I don't know so but view then we put the view right so we need to turn that off so it's there okay so it's kind of basically a render so if I turn this so and go to you know matte cap and we have a normal one so this way you can get the other one and also for for example the plane is uh flat for now right and you can add the subdivision and make it look uh more dense and that will you know be fine I will look as you know uh more detail also but you can render this one or save this one and you can blend it on top of your texture as well so that's how you can quickly bake uh in there we're gonna make uh add on at one point for this I want to that's like the fastest bake I have because I used to do it in three D Max uh when we used to make uh the textures bake and the baking used to take so long so long so what I did we used to have scanline rendering I have recorded a video at one point I'll post it uh this uh scanline method so we had render set so what it does you have a single click it convert the render uh engine so they had the hardware renders renderer inside three D Max which had a really good A O and it used to you know just give the A O renderer really quickly so I used to use that a lot this is unnaturally parallel okay so you can just simply proceed okay this is good this is one and the second thing what we can do i if we want to uh carry this and not as uh this we can carry them as uh as a cluster yeah so how we can make the cluster is let me select this collection and I will say okay uh create uh you can create a geometry node also give it a parameter yeah so let me just create a plane only I'll move it here and add collapse go down this one add geometry nodes new so simply and uh circle you take mesh circle and I will you know you can give these as parameters and just show it so you have simple mesh circle either you can fill it and go on so let's try just like this link on this one this one link uh not copy modify will be destroying this one no so let's we have instance on element we have also we have both of them matter but it don't have any I don't think I have faces so it's you know making excuses so what if we make a grid do we have a live boolean now we have a boolean but this is a boolean mesh boolean we need it's here so we have a grid and that's let's say if it uh and we have exclude so you will see what I'm trying to do here so I take exclude this mesh and see how this looks nice yeah and how much we have do we have we take this and radius and vertices we can nice now mesh one and then mesh two let's see do we get anything oh exclude I think uh why does it not have cap top and side ways bottom that's so stupid so transform geometry should give both no do we have fill or cap nope nope cap nope there's nothing there so if I take this mesh and I will just how to okay you can delete so we take geometry and we delete sides then we have nothing what we delete faces so we only have top and then with top we rotate it one hundred degree and if we do join geometry hmm okay so we do it minus five do it five wound or does it join the vertices that's the question merge merge by distance yes all good now let's try that was a long operation but did nothing this mesh hmm wait let me try one thing so much fun let's get it now uh that's why because it's not even same size and the radius and the size is there so we'll use to math we should divide by two see now we take booming not this boolean boolean mesh ah come on guy Bolean mesh Boolean here what did it replace that what so we take this nice noise intersect look at that guys finally okay we can successful learn something new now it should automatically be popping up stuff on top because we didn't give anything okay so let's take sticks ooh sticks went crazy we said point one was there a there are double or what I think they're on mult uh they're putting in each point this and then we put on top and see but there are so many in the single but it's okay not realize but we have to pick instance it's weird that it's not working here already oh this is zero zero value we cannot control it we anyway don't need this circle if there is uh any way to exclude the plane we'll see oh there is corner also I'm a bit crazy hmm and then we have scale also okay it's good it's good it works and we can reduce the debris scale so basically we can see how big this is enough it's not when we turn on realize instances where is it or realize instances and it just refuse to take other one because because we realized it what so so basically e even if it's this one is small but the the radius of things I was talking about basically okay let's look at chat how much time has been I'm starting to have fun okay hmm Milan is here hello Milan uh I didn't expect you to be live today happy Diwali my friend happy Diwali Milan you too thank you very much for being long time friend and supporting me with this thing uh the volume is little low man I'm not well so I'm speaking a little low otherwise my throat gonna kill me uh if I speak too loud uh if I can I gain this here there is maybe there will be uh gain or something like that I don't know maybe I'll check later on uh Leah uh yeah take care thank you very much Leah for joining in today and uh I really appreciate it for showing up and how long has been is the two and a half or one there it is so uh yeah it's only been one and a half hour I think we had fun the debris still not there I will see if I get time and uh to do it otherwise we'll continue it tomorrow and we'll add the debris in there um yeah so this is basically my idea was I was trying to do the lighting lighting is really challenging right uh for now and Milan I he checked the video basically I would send you this video I watched yesterday it was the interior lighting I don't know it was this magic he turned a few settings and just put one light and just global illumination everywhere so yeah I will send you that video maybe that will help uh you also do this uh do the lighting yeah mine is like killing me with it it gave the ugly result you can check few seconds few minutes back so basically we will make a bunch of debris uh clusters and we will send it to until and then we'll see okay so because I don't want to import these twenty different instances in my scene and then I will see how it works but mainly I will do clustering of different like uh maybe I will make one for each layer one for dirt one for uh the other thing so we scatter it with the scale like that so that much I will do and one for grass uh one for you know all the variation five six layers we have so we'll make one debris for it uh we 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 may if we want to make a variation we can make like a large one or a small one we can simply make it using these uh geometry node setups and uh a along with the plants in there so we take it and we just to do it and we need to fix the textures on the plants also so yeah so it's coming along so I will do that much for the path then we move on to the water bridge and then church so to wrap it up we only have few weeks left uh so yeah I want to get it done uh before that we think that's why we were testing our lighting because lighting make a lot of difference sometimes uh you know you it look flat because of the lighting also so that's why we're trying to fix it but it did not look good with the quick update uh actually the lighting I was trying so it did not work so maybe it's unreal because I have five point six so I blame it on unreal so yeah thank you very I blame it on Unreal. So yeah, thank you very much uh for joining in guys today. So I will take my leave and then we will see you guys tomorrow same time. And keep working on your scene. I will look forward to it. I will check it on Wednesday and Friday same time uh same as before uh if uh If my throat allowed. Okay. So no worries. Yeah. So take care and I will see you in the next one. Bye.